Very good. I'm ready whenever you are. Good evening, and welcome to the June 16th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. This meeting is now called to order and is being held in accordance with Executive Order N2920. The public is restricted from attending the meeting in person due to the Public Health Order issued by the County of San Diego. You may watch the high screen video of the meeting at www.cityofvista.com, and may participate via email at planningcomments@cityofvista.com, or by voicemail at 760-643-2816. Ms. Chow, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rossler.
Here.
Vice Chair Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Hastings.
Here.
Commissioner Grimm.
Here.
Commissioner Garretson.
Here.
Commissioner Looney.
Here.
Commissioner Aguilar.
Here.
Student Commissioner Wolf. Student Commissioner Natali. Let the record show that all Commissioners are present. Student Commissioners are absent. Thank you.
Very good. The next item on our agenda, Commissioners, is the approval of the minutes of our June 2nd meeting. If there are no changes to the minutes, then we hear a motion to approve.
Commissioner Grimm, I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Looney, I'll second.
All right. It's been moved in seconds to approve the minutes of our June 2nd meeting. Ms. Chow, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Your vote, please. Chairman Rossler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kramer.
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings.
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm.
Yes.
Commissioner Garretson.
Yes.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilar.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Chow, are there any changes to our agenda tonight?
No changes tonight. Thank you, Chairman Rossler.
Very good. The next item on our agenda is oral communication. The time the Planning Commission sets aside for testimony to the public on matters that are not on our agenda. Ms. Chow, did we receive any communications regarding oral communication?
We have received no oral communications for the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Very good. So, our next item is the public hearing, and the public can only testify... Public testimony can only be accepted via email and voicemail, as I previously stated. Email comments can be submitted with planningcomments@cityofvista.com, or by voicemail at 760-643-2816. We will first have a staff's report and staff presentation. The applicant's presentation will follow. We will have a time for questions from Commissioners. I will then... We will then take a break and open the public hearing. Allow five minutes for the public to use their comments, either through email or voicemail. At the conclusion of our five-minute break, staff will summarize or read all the public comments received. I will then close the public hearing and open it to Commissioners' discussion and then Commissioners' vote. So, the first item on our agenda is the public hearing for Courtyard by Marriott, DC Shadow Ridge Sub LLC. Mr. Rossler, your staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission. The project before you tonight is a courtyard by Marriott. The application number is P19-0378. The request includes a site development plan, a special use permit, a minor use permit, and a tentative parcel map.
Next slide.
The subject property is 7.9 acres. It's located on the north side of Shadow Ridge Drive, west of Sycamore Avenue. The site is currently one parcel and maintains a 232,403-square-foot light industrial building, as well as 2.6 acres of vacant land. The area highlighted on this slide in red is designated for the Courtyard by Marriott project.
Next slide.
The surrounding land uses include the Vista Fire Station, number four to the north, the Burlington Coke Factory to the east, shopping centers, as well as La Petite Academy to the south across Shadow Ridge Drive, and a light industrial building to the west on the subject property.
Next slide.
The subject site maintains a general plan land use designation of general commercial, which allows for a variety of commercial uses, including retail centers, grocery stores, restaurants, as well as hotels.
Next slide.
The subject site is Zone Commercial C3, which permits light manufacturing, as well as a variety of commercial uses, again, retail, restaurants, and hotels.
Next slide.
The proposed Courtyard by Marriott project would require a site development plan for the review of the site improvements, a special use permit for the hotel use, and the allowance to exceed the building height limitation in the Development Code, a minor use permit for onsite sale of beer and wine, for a minor use permit, and a tentative parcel map to subdivide the existing parcel. The proposed Courtyard by Marriott would be a 121-room, four-story hotel. The project includes landscape, parking lot, and other site improvements. The proposed hotel operations would include 24-hour check-in and check-out for guests, as well as meal services. The hotel operations would also include onsite sale of beer and wine. Hotel amenities include outdoor lounge area, a pool area, fitness center, as well as media pods. The proposed hotel would exceed the two-story, 35-foot height limitation in the Development Code. However, this is permitted subject to approval of a special use permit.
Next slide.
The submitted site plan proposes a 121-room, four-story hotel building towards the southerly portion of the site, outside amenities to the east of the hotel building, and parking facilities to the west and to the north of the proposed building.
Next slide.
Vehicular access to the proposed hotel would be provided by a new 32-foot-wide driveway located along Shadow Ridge Drive. That driveway has been designed for limited ride-in and ride-out vehicular movements. An additional access driveway is located at the northwest corner of the project site, which connects to a private driveway on the adjacent property to the north and ultimately continues to Thibodeau Road.
Next slide.
In regards to parking, the City of Vista Development Code requires one parking space per guest room for hotel uses. Based on the proposed 121-room configuration of the floor plan submitted, the project would require 121 parking spaces. The submitted site plan indicates 121 parking spaces would be provided.
Next slide.
In regards to landscaping, the site plan dedicates 20% of the site to landscaping, which exceeds the code requirement of 15%. The landscaping proposes the use of native and non-native plant materials, as well as the preservation of eucalyptus and sycamore trees along the project boundaries.
Next slide.
The submitted first-floor plan includes a portico chair entry on the west elevation of the building. The first-floor plan has been configured to accommodate a reception area, a lounge, a fitness center, meeting room, 14 guest rooms, food prep area, as well as other back-of-house facilities. Access to the remaining three floors is provided by two centrally-located elevators, as well as stairways on both ends of the building.
Next slide.
The second-floor plan was configured to accommodate 35 guest rooms, and the third and fourth floor will each provide 36 guest rooms.
Next slide.
The proposed hotel building would be a four-story structure, reaching a maximum height of 49.6 feet. The architectural style of the proposed building is considered contemporary. The building would utilize exterior finishes such as stucco-lit facades with hardwood siding, fiber panel accents, illuminated windows, and metal trim. The color palette for the hotel would be a mixture of earth tones, including tan, gray, as well as a blue accent.
Next slide.
These images are the north-south elevation of the building. The south elevation of the building would face Shadow Ridge Drive.
Next slide.
These images are two perspectives of the building from Shadow Ridge Drive, which depict the architectural enhancements of the building, as well as the articulation of the building.
Next slide.
These two images are two perspectives, one of the pool and lounge area to the left, as well as the portico chair entrance to the right.
Next slide.
This project also includes a tentative parcel map to subdivide the existing 7.9-acre parcel into two separate parcels, a 5.3-acre parcel, which is designated parcel number one on this slide, and a 2.6-acre parcel designated parcel number two on this slide. The subject hotel project is proposed on the 2.6-acre parcel, and the 5.3-acre parcel will continue to maintain the existing two-story light industrial building.
Next slide.
The general plan land use designation for the site is general commercial, which allows for commercial uses, including grocery stores, restaurants, as well as hotels. In regards to the C3 zone development standards, the project would exceed the maximum height limitation of 35 feet. The proposed hotel would be... Would reach a height of 49.6 feet. The increase in height is permitted, subject to the approval of a special use permit. In regards to parking, the site plan indicates a total of 121 parking spaces would be provided, and the code requires 121 parking spaces. In regards to landscaping, the submitted landscape plan proposes 20% of the site dedicated to landscape improvements, and the code requirement is 15%. And staff believes onsite sale of beer and wine is appropriate in context of the hotel use itself.
Next slide.
The project is categorically exempt from CECL. However, technical studies were prepared for traffic, cultural resources, noise, and air quality greenhouse gases to support the exemption. Environmental conditions of approval are also included within your packet to ensure no impacts to air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, lighting, as well as noise. Staff does note that the traffic generated by the hotel use includes low volume of peak hour trips, which would not trigger significant traffic impacts.
Next slide.
With that, staff is recommending the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving a site development plan, a special use permit, a minor use permit, a tentative parcel map to develop a 120-room, four-story hotel that exceeds the 35-foot height limitation, with associated improvements in the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption on 2.6 acres of vacant land located at 760 Shadow Ridge Drive. And please note that staff has corrected the proposed resolution identifying the maximum 35-foot height limitation. And that concludes staff's report. I am here to answer any questions you might have tonight. Thank you.
Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Yes, we do. This is Christine Young with Comstock Realty Partners. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, I'll be presenting on behalf of Comstock Realty Partners. Just want to say thank you to staff and planning Commissioners for the opportunity to present the project. Michael did an excellent job presenting the project, so I apologize in advance if I've received some information. On page... So, starting on page 25, in the next few slides, I'll be discussing... Introducing Comstock Realty Partners, their project goals, describing their location, key attributes of the project, going over the site, floor, and elevation plans, and room rooms. Next slide. Comstock Realty Partners is a real estate development firm that specializes in the value-add and opportunistic acquisition and renovation of industrial, office, and self-searching urban infill properties. We've done projects from South California to North California. Next slide. So, the project goals of the project. Our goal was to personalize a 7.89-acre site into a 5.29-acre for the industrial property to the west and 2.59 acres for the hotel site. Project will create a new driveway entrance to the hotel site that will connect to Thibodeau Drive. And part of the project is that we will entitle and develop a 2.59-acre of an undeveloped land into a senior hotel that's permitted use under the Thibodeau-Shawnee Law. For the hotel, we would partner with Martin Marriott Courtyard as a hotel brand, and we would also partner with Evolution, one of the nation's top operators, to ensure the highest-quality hotel development. Our goal is to create a modern, sustainable, and beautiful building that will fit within the characters of your community and offer varieties of amenities that will... Will describe later on. Next slide. Michael already went over this, but just... In this slide, just wanted to get a sense of the location. The site is located just off of Highway 78, located on Shadow Ridge Avenue, just off of Vista Avenue. And as you can see in figures two, three, and four, the site is vacant where the... We are proposing for the hotel. Next slide. On slide 29, again, just wanted to give a sense of the location, just off of Highway 28 and east of Crossbad. Next slide. Some of the key attributes include 120-room flex-service hotel. Interesting architectural elements and the traffic finishes. Lush landscape with pleasant trees and treves along Shadow Ridge Drive. One of the key features is developing a new driveway from Shadow Ridge that will connect to Thibodeau, where the lobby will be... Where lobby will be to focus it off.
Christine now. She was kind of reading her slides that are... Her slides. Hey, Scott. You're on mute, please.
Put the stuff on mute. Scott.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. On the south side of the elevation, there's going to be a green wall to add a little bit more interest and... And soften the development from Shadow Ridge Drive. Under the parking, there'll be 115 open ground level parking, plus six handicapped parking spaces, including two EV charging stations. The entire project will have 70 queen rooms, 51 king rooms, and 88 A&amp;E rooms. I apologize. The... This slide got a little distorted, but this was the slide plan that I'm assuming the... The property lines, the new driveway, and the parking area. On slide 32, we have the first-floor plan. I'm just going to skip to the next slide as it depicts the different amenity areas. So, starting at the porch area in yellow, that's where guests could dive in and walk into the hotel. In green, you see the reception desk where guests can check in. And then in purple, that is the indoor lounging beach and lobby area. Marriott Courtyard has adopted kind of a Starbucks style where people can sit, eat, and just have a communal area to enjoy. To the left, there's also a food prep for the bistro. And outside, we have the outdoor seating area and pool, which will feature a large pool for... And as well as, we will have a meeting room and fitness center for guests. On slide 34, these are the second, third, and fourth-floor floor plan. Slide 35, we have the front elevations, and as you can see, we've tried to make it... Interesting architectural elements when incorporating earthy tones, as well as wood elements for the project. Slide 36 is the backside. Let's get some of these. And on slide 37, we have the south elevation. Again, we've tried to make this size of location, which you can see from Shadow Ridge Drive, interesting by adding some of the earthy tones with the wood texture and the green wall and the blue accent. This is the elevation of the north side on slide 38. And you can see there's the porch area we're just driving through. On slide 39, we have the landscape plan, which includes retaining two out of the sycamore trees, and then seven of 13 eucalyptus trees, and adding a variety of trees and bushes. On slide 40, kind of just depicts some of the other plant... The plantlets we would in our landscape plan. So, almost done. On slide 41, we have rendering of the front elevation and south elevation. Again, you can probably see it a little bit better. We've tried to make the project architectural... It's interesting with the... As the pop-ups and the roof lines and the different sections in the project. And here, you can also see the new driveway, which would connect to Thibodeau Drive on the other side. On slide 42, again, we see the south elevation, and then we've tried to make this beautiful, as it can be seen from Shadow Ridge, by adding trees and scenery to the project. And here on slide 43, we can see the main entrance to the hotel and the porch area. And on slide 44, we have the pool area, and beyond, you can kind of see the seating area and lounge area. On slide 45, Marriott Courtyard has a police case concept plan for the interior of the hotel. And so, you can see the bistro and bar area and the lounge and lounge area. So, as I mentioned before, Marriott adopted kind of a communal space so people could just work on the heaters rather than stay in their rooms. They can enjoy kind of a common space area. And for slide 46, here are some of the Marriott room layouts, and you can see that there's two color schemes going on here. On slide 47, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity, and we're very excited about the project. So, that concludes our presentation, and thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the staff presentation and the applicant's presentation. We'll now open it up to questions from the Commissioners. Commissioner Kramer, any questions for staff or the applicant?
Just one question, and it could be answered by either one. How many floors is the Kaiser Permanente building that's one or two lots just west of this site?
It's actually at 780 Shadow Ridge Drive, and it's three stories with a height of 43 feet 9 inches.
Okay. So, it's roughly about the same as this one. So, when I see the 46, and then when I went and drove the site today, it's like, I think it fits in just perfectly. So, I like what I see, and I don't have any questions at this time, but thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Hastings, any questions for staff or the applicant?
I just have one question. There... The driveway that goes out to Thibodeau Road, is there going to be a sign there for the hotel? So that they know that that is... The guests know that that is an access point?
The site plan does not indicate a sign being there, and typically, the code doesn't allow for off-site signage, so I'm assuming there probably won't be off-site signage at that driveway?
So, they're going to just sort of have the guests based on, it's the big building?
You know, I think that the Thibodeau Drive is considered a secondary driveway, so I think once leaving the site, they'll have the... Understand, once they get to the site, that there's an additional driveway to exit and to enter on the street system at Thibodeau Drive. But no, there wouldn't be any off-site signage.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Very good. Commissioner Grimm, any questions for staff or the applicant?
Yeah, I had a question for the applicant. The site really doesn't have very good visibility from the freeway. It doesn't have very good visibility from Sycamore, and has kind of moderate visibility even from Shadow Ridge, because of the narrowness of the lot. I guess my question is, the applicant's proceeding doesn't seem concerned about that. Would that be because, primarily because of the booking power of Marriott?
Yes, this is Adrian Comstock. Yeah, I think it's a combination of the Marriott booking power. I mean, this will be a... This will be a hotel that people want to stay at more as a destination that they plan to, because they want to do business in Vista, or they're visiting Calse, San Marcos, or they're going to Legoland, or visiting the North County for a period of time. So, they're probably going to seek this first. It's not going to be sort of drive-by traffic, where people are thinking like, "Oh, I want to stay there someday." So, that's... I think that's one part. And then also, I think, you know, due to the height of the structure, we do think we'll have some decent visibility, and on Shadow Ridge Drive, we'll have a monument sign within the sign code regulations, but I think we'll make it clear as well. So, I think that's how we feel comfortable with the marketing aspect of it and visibility.
Okay. So, primarily, most of your reservations would probably come through either Marriott or through the internet?
Correct, yeah. As is the case for a lot of municipalities today. We expect that to be a large share of our reservations.
Great. Thank you very much.
Very good. Commissioner Garretson, any questions for staff or the applicant?
Yes, one question. As you come in, and I guess either one can answer this. As you come in off Shadow Ridge, you turn right. Are you going to be able to make an immediate left turn into the industrial building, or will that be blocked off?
The site plan actually indicates there would be opening to access the adjacent industrial property from the Courtyard by Marriott. So, yes, there would be a driveway connecting the two.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney, any questions for staff or the applicant?
No questions, Commissioner.
Very good. Commissioner Aguilar?
Just one question. My question has to do with the mechanicals on the roof. How are those going to be treated, and are those going to be visible?
The site plan... The roof indicates the mechanical equipment would be located in the farther north, northern portion of the building. So, that would be set up into the building with the elevation difference from Shadow Ridge Drive to the project site, which is elevated by about 18 feet. I don't see there being a strong visibility of the equipment itself, as well as the fact that the building, they'd need a parapet that would help screen the equipment.
Okay. That's the only question I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. For myself, if you go back to slide eight, which shows the overall area of the project with Burlington Building in front of it. When we first... When we first set this, I thought, well, the Burlington Building is going to provide fairly significant upper visual of the backside. And then as I looked at the S curve there on the... And then as I looked at the S curve there on Shadow Ridge Drive, it appears to me that the southwest corner of the building is going to be fairly prominent along Shadow Ridge Drive. And so, when you go and look at Slide 18, that southwest corner is somewhat plain. And so, I'm concerned about that and we'd like to hear from the applicant about what additional architectural treatment you might be able to do to that southwest corner.
Sure. Well, and I'm not sure how familiar or how recently you may have driven that S curve on Shadow Ridge Drive going westerly from Sycamore, but there's actually a pretty significant slope which Michael Ressler who just explained that our project site pad will be about 18 feet above Shadow Ridge Drive. But if you imagine as you're driving from Sycamore west toward our project, there is a grassy slope and there's a very thick sort of row of eucalyptus trees. You can see it looks like black dots that are on the aerial in Slide 8. And to be completely candid, those trees really screen our property and what would eventually be that hotel. So, it won't be really starkly visible if those trees remain. So, regardless of that, we have also been, you know, very mindful of the fact that an attractive build will bring customer, will bring more customers than guests. And so, we want to, our goal is not to save money on facade and exterior treatments, but actually to spend a little bit more to make it a little bit nicer. And so, first of all, we placed the swimming pool and garden area at the southeast corner, which would be right at that area that you're talking about. So, there will be trees and garden areas surrounding the pool that also act as a green buffer for the eye when you're looking at the actual hotel building. And then along that southern face of the hotel, we planned for the courtyard Marriott sign at the parapet and then we've also planned for a living green wall. However, we have received some feedback from neighbors that they're concerned the green wall may not be easily maintained and they wilt and not look good. We also received another notice that had even suggestions for architectural details that we could add to that southern face. And we will, we will attempt to add as much architectural interest and texture to soften the face of the southern face of the hotel building as long as we can also stay within the guidelines of Marriott. Because Marriott has very strict design guidelines about what you can do for one of their hotels. So, I hope that answers your question, but I believe that actually it's not quite as stark as you would expect. We've got a lot of green with the trees, we've got the green with the pool, and we're trying to make that southern architectural face as interesting and textured as possible.
Okay. That concludes the commissioners' questioning of staff and the applicant. We will now, I will now open the public hearing. Let me get to that slide. So, the, I will now open the public hearing and I have 6:34, so we will take a five-minute break for people to provide comments and we will reconvene at 6:39. Very good, thank you, Kathy. It is now 6:39 and we are reconvening. Ms. Chow, did we receive any comments during the break?
Yes, we received a letter from South Vista Communities that actually was submitted to be read into the record, so I will do that right now. So, basically it says, "South Vista Communities appreciates the opportunity, the time of Comstock Realty Partners to discuss this project with our board members. SVC supports the location of the Marriott Courtyard Hotel at this location. With vehicular access from Shadow Ridge Drive and Thibodeau Road, we do not believe it will impact traffic negatively. We understand that cars exiting the hotel property onto Shadow Ridge Drive will be able to turn right only. We have reviewed the landscaping plan and think it would be an attractive setting for the hotel and will fit nicely on Shadow Ridge Drive with one exception, in parentheses, "See architectural details." We strongly suggest replacing the scraggly Sycamore street trees along the front edge of this property, they're very unattractive. Architectural details. The two narrow ends of the hotel will face public thoroughfares, Shadow Ridge Drive and Thibodeau Road, and we feel they both are very bland blank walls. We understand there is to be a green wall installed on the south elevation, however, we are concerned about the ability to maintain the wall plantings to retain the fresh green appearance. Even with a green wall, this still leaves a great percentage of blank wall on both north and south elevations. We strongly advocate for additional architectural detail on both elevations or at least planting a number of tall trees to screen the walls. Signage. The signage as proposed is appropriate. We would like to suggest to the planning commission the imposition of a condition that no further signage be permitted." That's the end of the comment letter, thank you. And no additional comments received.
All right. Commissioners, any questions based on the comments received? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing and open it up for Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Kramer, any comments?
I like, I like the project the way it is. I'm sympathetic to South Vista Communities and I understand their feelings on the blank wall or the, I guess you call it a lack of architectural interest on those other two locations. But I yield to my fellow commissioners, especially Commissioner Looney, who is an architect and always comes up with some great ideas, but I'm in favor of what we see. I think they've done a really nice job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Commissioner Hastings?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Kramer. I think it's a nice building. I think it will go well there and I think it's a very appropriate use of that space. That's it.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Grimm? Charlie?
I'm sorry, Rick, I was on mute. Can you hear me now?
Can.
Yeah. I would agree with Rick's comments that the south side looks a little stark to me. To me, it's not a deal breaker, but if the rest of the commissioners feel that maybe we need to do something to, or ask for a little bit enhancement on that, I'd be in favor of that as well.
Commissioner Garretson, comments?
Yes, I would just echo the comments previously made about the end of each side of the building and I wish it would be a little bit more attractive.
Very good. Commissioner Looney, can you come up with a solution for it?
Well, it sounds like it's all on me now, huh? Could we have?
No pressure.
So, he might come up with some other ideas. So, well, I do have a couple of comments. The roof line, I think that west elevation could be enhanced by a greater variation of that roof line. We are granting the developer a significant increase in building height and I think it would be worth their while to look at creating, again, greater variation in that parapet wall to where we can have a much more interesting roof line as it visually touches the sky. So, that's one of my comments. As mentioned by other commissioners, that south corner is a predominant, is predominantly visibly as we come up Shadow Ridge. The building is placed according to the civil drawings or the landscape drawings about two feet behind the top of the existing slope. And that slope is at the eastern edge or southern edge is, the pad difference is 20 feet from the street curb to the building pad. So, it does take a predominant corner and with the Sycamore trees being on the properties in the winter time, we're not going to have any leaves to filter or screen that view. Yes, we still have the Sycamore or the eucalyptus there, but when we're looking at a building structure this height, it's still going to be visible. I would like to have the applicant reconsider adding some type of finessration, some shadows, colors, or texture variation, at least on that front portion of the building before it steps back for the lounge area. And that can be seen, I'm just looking at the civil drawing, but it's where the pool, the end of the pool where that building offsets again for those meeting areas and lounge areas. So, that would be something that I would like to see the developer work on a little bit harder. That's all. Chairman.
Very good. Commissioner Aguar, comment?
Commissioner Looney and I met with staff on this. He had a lot of good ideas, which he just repeated, and it sounds like he thought about it a little bit more and enhanced it better. So, that's my only concern is that southwest corner there. Other than that, I see it's a very nice project. I think it's a good addition to Vista and a good location as well. Supportive.
Very good, very good. I tend to agree with the rest of the commissioners. I think the use and the location is great. It provides for not only the Shadow Ridge community but for the business part. And my concern about the southwest corner of the building, I personally don't think they have to do anything more than what they've done on the west elevation. The addition of the wood siding and an additional color would go a long way towards, towards shaping up that corner. Commissioners, I'd like to know your position on whether we should give general guidance on the south and west elevation and turn it over to Michael and John as to approval of those elevations. Is that something you could support?
This is Commissioner Kramer and I could.
Commissioner Garrettson?
This is Commissioner Grimm. Yeah, this is Commissioner Grimm. I would agree too that I think we just condition them to add treatment to that wall and then have them work it out with staff so it doesn't have to come back.
Commissioner Garretson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to agree that we turn it over to staff and the developer to enhance that, those two ends.
Okay, so you're talking, you're talking both the north and the south elevation or the south and the western?
Primarily Shadow Ridge.
Okay, very good.
Chairman Rosler?
Yes.
I'd sort of make, for clarification, we were talking the south elevation and the east elevation, correct, facing Sycamore, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the east elevation and the south elevation, primarily that southeast corner?
Focusing on the southeast corner, yes.
Yes. Yes.
This is Commissioner Looney. And I think what they do is they just take some of the materials and finishes and colors that they have on that face, on the face of the building facing Shadow Ridge, just wrap it around the corner and extend that, oh, I don't know, 60 to 80 feet towards on the far side of the pool. That's going to do that wraparound to give it just a little bit of punch as we come up on that, on the driveway, on the driveway entrance.
I would tend to agree with Commissioner Looney's comment.
And this is Adrian Comstock. If I may interrupt, you know, we do have both our project architect and our senior principal architect on the line. And John Cataldo, I don't know if John, you want to just give some confirmatory input that you're understanding what the planning commission is talking about. I mean, as developer, I certainly get it, but you're the one, you and Natalia will be doing the drawings. Can you speak to this for a moment, John?
Can we get on off mute? Are we off mute?
You're off mute because we can hear you say, "Are we off mute?"
Thank you very much and I appreciate the comments that were given to us. And quite frankly, we were struggling with that corner ourselves, but I think that the comments are well received and I don't think we need to do too much. And I think if we bring some of the materials around that we used in some of the other portions of the elevation, the color and a little bit of treatment, we could really enhance it. And I don't think it's going to take very much at all. And I think we can work with staff to resolve that.
Very good.
As developer, I'll just add that a couple of things. One is that I also recognize Commissioner Looney's comments about playing with the parapet height and maybe some varying heights of the parapet along the west wall. And I think that we will definitely take that into consideration. I actually think it would really enhance the look and I appreciate that comment as well. And then, you know, finally, our, you guys probably don't know this or didn't see this in our materials, but our company logo is an oak tree. And we, you know, have a real strong belief in, A, environmentally, you know, friendly and sustainable projects, and especially in trees and horticulture and arborism. So, we will, we want to make this as attractive and lush and green as possible. So, I think we're all on the same page and we really appreciate your input and comments.
Sounds like everybody's on the same page here. Would someone like to take a shot at a motion with an additional condition on the south and east elevation and the roof parapet?
This is Commissioner Looney and I move to approve P-190378 has written with the conditions that the developer architect reevaluate the roof line at the parapet for greater variation in height and then also additional architectural studies on using the same materials that face the street to wrap the corner on that south elevation.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Garretson, second.
Very good. It has been moved in second to approve the project with additional study of the roof parapet and the south and the east elevation. Ms. Chow, would you call the rule, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rosler, your vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm?
Yes.
Commissioner Garretson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Arguilera?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Very good. Well, congratulations, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. We'll give them a minute to log off and then, any reports or comments from commission members? All right. Mr. Tarnley, your report?
Nothing special to report tonight, commissioners, other than we will not have a meeting. The first meeting in July, the only meeting we have scheduled in July is the second meeting, which I believe is the 21st. Let me confirm that.
July 21st, John.
Yeah, so that's it. That'll be our next planning commission meeting and we will touch base with you all a couple of weeks prior to that. So, I hope you enjoy the next few weeks.
Very good. If there's nothing further, the commission meeting is adjourned and we stand adjourned until our next meeting of July 21st. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.